Good evening, I'd like to call to order the January 22nd meeting of the Groton Town Council Committee of the Whole. Roll call, all councilors are present with the exception of Councilor Parker who is attending the TBCCA meeting and she will be here as soon as it is over. Calendar and Communications. Councilor Baumgartner.
Nothing to report.
Councilor Franco.
Tonight I attended the school building contractor and job presentation down at the seniors center. It's for small businesses and anybody looking for work on new schools and I believe they can contact somebody in the, what is it, the Permanent School Building Committee to get more information. That's it.
Councilor Heath.
I attended the Southeast Board of the Southeastern Connecticut Water Authority and Southeastern, well, that was it. I was going to say it twice, it's listed twice.
Okay. Councilor O'Gree.
I went to the meeting, I call it JAG, but that's not right.
J-LOS.
JAG, thank you. Which once again was very informative, very stimulating meeting. Bob Ross is now the Chair, I believe, and he assigned us a role that I will be sharing with you in the near future. And they're really moving forward on housing study, they're moving, oh, they've got, each person has something that they're working on from each town and it's really, a really good group and it's going to accomplish a lot.
Councilor Atwater.
I attended the Groton First Children Meeting last week. I went to the Electric Boat Legislative Breakfast. I went back to the community center for a tour. We were there last summer when it was just being taken over and it was amazing, the activity going on with karate and dance classes and basketball and so forth. It really is, it's picked up, it's quite nice. Yesterday, yesterday I went to a memorial service presentation for Martin Luther King Jr. at the St. John's Christian Church and Juliette Parker, one of our own, was the speaker that morning. And the last thing that I wanted to mention was that, to show you the dedication to my job, I spent an all-day session in Hartford, the Capitol, on the Pension Plan of Connecticut.
Thank you for attending that.
That was something. And that's it.
Thank you. Councilor Schmidt.
No report.
Councilor Sippery.
No report. I was with Rita this week.
Just a couple of things, I also attended the Martin Luther King Jr. Service at St. John's in the city, it was a very nice service. And I just wanted to mention that former RTM member Fred Kent passed away this week, so keep the family in your prayers. And I wanted to thank the Mystic Women's Club for a very generous donation to the Human Services Energy Assistance Fund. They have an annual sale and they made a very nice contribution. Mystic Women's Club, as a result of their annual point seti, point setia sale. All right, very good. And I think, oh, Officer Savino filed a very nice community policing report. He is the gentleman that works out of the Groton Public Library with our teens and he also attends things like Safe Futures Walk and he's very active in the community and I hope we can keep that going in this year's coming budget. Approval of minutes. Twenty nineteen forty-seven. Councilor Baumgartner.
So I'll make a motion to approve the Committee of the Whole minutes of January eighth, twenty nineteen, in the Committee of the Whole Special Meeting Minutes of January fifteenth, twenty nineteen, so moved.
Second. Moved by Baumgartner and seconded by Heath. I wanted to just mention something on the January eighth minutes. I did say at the meeting that Councilor Franco was away on business, but I would like it to reflect that in the minutes as well. Anyone else?
She was at a class on that day, correct?
Right.
All right, so seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of approval of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
No abstain.
No abstain. So seven to zero to one, with the abstention being Franco. Okay. We're on to five A legislative update. And this is just a discussion item, no action taken. We have with us Representative Conley and Representative De La Cruz and I believe Senator Summers is on her way back from the Capitol because her vote was later in the afternoon, correct?
Yes, we voted at around 1:30, I believe.
Yep.
And then the Senate voted shortly thereafter, the bill that we voted on, the governor signed around 3:30 or 3:45.
Okay, thank you.
Hartford traffic's always difficult, most people know.
Thank you. So we'll let you, we'll just turn the floor over and let you give us an update on whatever you'd like to tell us about.
So today we voted on a bill that gives some relief to federal workers, specifically that mostly affects us, is Coast Guard workers who are working without pay, that they have access to unemployment. They also will have access to no-interest loans for a certain period of time to help folks be able to pay their bills while the government shut down. And it gives the towns permission to waive interest on property taxes if the towns wish, it's not a mandate, it just gives the towns the ability to do what they wish, thanks to our town manager Bert, who let us know how the town of Groton felt about that, but he, the other subdivisions do have to weigh in as to how taxes will be paid. And we are in session, we started almost three weeks ago now.
Yes.
Seems like yesterday, but we're back up in Hartford. We're doing committee work right now and we are both on the same committees that we were last two years, which makes, makes life nice and easy for us. It is, the House is always a wonderful place with 151 folks, with sometimes 151 different opinions and our goal is to move those opinions in the right direction, get some positive laws passed and get a budget delivered at a reasonable time. Our budget process starts on this long session with the governor in February, giving us his budget, so we have a new governor, hopefully some new ideas and we're hopeful that it'll be a budget that we can all agree with, but we have not seen the budget yet that he proposes. Once he proposes, then the Appropriations Committee will take that over, work with the leaders of the House and Senate to finite the budget and we will vote, usually the budget vote is at the end of session, right around June for us this year, so as soon as we at least get the governor's first draft, that'll give the councilors an idea as to what he's thinking to give you an idea for your town budget. And then laws are all going through committee, I've had a couple of votes yet, I think yours, your committees haven't voted yet.
Not yet, still, still meetings.
Still meetings, and we should have public hearings starting in February as well, moving, moving bills to votes in March and continuing to do the good work on behalf of the people. Excellent, thank you.
Yeah, and an update even on today is, hopefully any folks that are listening in, there are, there is some help now, there's a little bit of relief, it's going to allow folks that are in the service that, to make that bridge of the 5,000, it's a $5,000 loan cap that they can borrow money for up to nine months without interest, and that's so they can avoid late fees on credit cards, mortgage payments, all the things, and again, it was actually a bipartisan bill to me, it was 135 to 15. You always got to question how 15 people can be against anything, but everyone comes to their conclusions their own way. But again, I think it was, it was a show how the new governor has reached across the aisle. He made it a bill that was palatable to 135 people and everyone knows that's not easy to do in Hartford. But again, I'm excited about the new governor, I think that we may, because it's a new governor and he's going to actually come out with his budget actually later than normal, because this is his first year, I think it's a couple, couple of weeks we gave him a little bit extra time than typical, so that's not going to stop our date, the June date, so there shouldn't be any change for the council to make their decisions, but again, it's a, it's a, I don't know, you said easier, because we had the same three committees, I think it's a little bit harder in some sense, because now it's our second term and a lot of the folks are coming up to us expecting answers to hard questions and obviously you guys know that, you have to answer those questions that people ask and being a second term, I think it's going to be a little interesting.
Yeah, and I do appreciate the time that the mayor and our town manager took with me in December to go over some of your legislative priorities before session started, so that we, I could get, Joe and I could get a heads up and start preparing bills a little bit early.
All right, do you have any comments or questions for our legislative delegation? Councilor Heath, go ahead.
Two things. As I'm going through the Conservation and Development, Plan on Conservation and Development, I think one of the things that comes, that's coming out, and I'm having a few conversations with town staff, including John Bert, it would be good if you come across things from the state, like basically we're looking for a little bit of guidance from the state when it comes to deal with the issue of climate change and specifically sea level rise, we're already having some roads that are flooding and it would just be good, I think, to get the whole coastline on the same page.
Absolutely, there's, there's a few bills that are coming out on that, and again, because I'm on, I'm on Insurance, the Insurance Committee, that's one that actually sees those, it depends, when a bill's entered, it gets shaken out to who it goes to. So last year we saw some, because it has, it has to do a lot with the insurance, who they're going to insure, what neighborhoods they're going to insure or not insure. So that's something that I may see a little bit of, but I haven't seen any in the housing, it hasn't showed up in that at all, and obviously the energy, which is my other committee, it has come up, because who's very interested are the folks that have the power lines and the utility lines that run over the Amtrak on our coastline, so I think they're going to, you're going to see something, some movement from business pushing towards the initiatives that help us hopefully keep the sea level down.
Hasn't yet come up on my committee's judiciary, which if it's a major law change, does eventually make its way through judiciary, sometimes on the second, after it makes it through another committee. Transportation and Planning and Development, which is our town hall, it's where your specific municipal laws go through, so as these things get shaken out, we'll definitely pay attention to them.
I just want to add before we go to Councilor O'Gree, if there's anything on infrastructure and, because we have some new bridges that are going to have to be built and if there's anything that would help municipalities deal with rebuilding the infrastructure in order to respond to the climate change, that would be helpful for us as well, because we have some big projects coming up. Councilor O'Gree, and then Councilor Atwater.
I just had a couple of questions. Is there anything that's going on at state level to begin to address the plastic problem that we have, since it seems to be growing so rapidly?
There's two bills on plastic bags that I know of. One is a ban of plastic bags and the other is a five-cent tax on non-recyclable plastic or paper bags. And I actually spoke to, that's sitting in Environment Committee right now, the Chair at this time does plan on doing a public hearing and then deciding how to merge those two bills and seeing how they go through the system. Two years ago, the five-cent tax was discussed, I don't know if it made it out of committee, the committee may have voted on it, I believe they may have, but it did not make it through the House and the Senate. So there's, there's often issues, some people say, well, I don't want to talk about anything that could be a tax, I don't care that Aldi's charges 10 cents a bag or that in Great Britain they charge a quarter tax for environmental issues, some people stop listening when they hear the word tax. Others say, well, let's have a public hearing, let's hear both sides, all sides, and let's have a vote, so we'll have to see how that shakes out through Environment.
Yeah, and after all the news that's been reported on plastic, I think that's going to be, it's a bill that didn't make it far last year to me, I didn't hear about it much, I think it's going to be different this year, there's been a lot of reporting, obviously we all know that something has to happen at some point, but I, we'll see, again, that's not something I'll come up with by committee, but if you're interested in any bill like that, you can go to the cga.c t.gov and just click on it and follow it, you can actually follow exactly where it's at and follow if it's still alive or not alive and that's how you make things move, if it really interests you, just let us know and we'll make sure we can try and help push it along.
I'm hoping to see it go deeper in the fact that we need to find a way to make plastic that can be disposable, because we use plastic every time we turn around. The other question I had is, we have a problem in Groton and New London with parking for our industries. Does, does the state ever assist a company with parking garages?
The state can assist with bonding money.
I beg your pardon?
With bonding money. And what the state does need for assistance is cooperation from the towns as to how much things will cost, what the towns and/or businesses are willing to contribute. We just got the bonding information this year. We do have a bonding cap, so there is, it's not, luckily, I think for everyone, it's not a bottomless pool of money, there is a limit, but the state is there to assist, so if you know of businesses where the town wants to cooperate, please let us know, we can move applications through the process.
Councilor? Councilor O'Gree, is that it?
Oh, yes.
Councilor Atwater.
I have a few things that just seem to have happened in the last week or so, since we had a chance to talk to John, and being at the pension seminar, one of the things that really troubled me, and I read now that they're talking about possibly moving the pension costs to the municipalities, and when the pension, and I forgive me on the dates because I don't remember exactly, but, but the pension law for Connecticut was put in effect in, I want to say 1938 or 1958 or something, and for the first 20 or 30 years, they never funded it. And now, I mean, I understand that Lamont was very good, Danil was very good about funding at least the yearly pension costs and not, not putting that off as some previous legislations have done, but my personal feeling is that if the state created this problem, it's up to the state to solve it and not pass it on to the municipalities. Just before I left the House tonight, there was a news clip about tolls and tax on the roads and so forth, I understand Lamont wants taxes on trucks only and only out of state, and I personally don't think like Rhode Island that they're going to get away with that, that that's going to be turned over in the courts, but I'd like to also mention that I don't feel that it's a tax, that we do have alternative roads and if you don't want to pay the toll, you can go there elsewhere, you don't have to go on the toll road, so it's not like a tax that everybody has to pay, nobody seems to feel that, they all talk about it as being a tax. The article in the day this morning about revenues from the slot machines and gambling, just a week or two ago, there were reports that November and December were, revenues at the casinos were down from what they were a year ago, and yet now they're projecting that the revenue slot payments are looking better, and I guess I don't understand how the revenue can be going down and yet it can look better, so my question is how accurate are these estimates? And lastly, the use of marijuana, I think there was something again in the paper today that only one legislature from our whole district is behind legalizing recreational marijuana, and again, I think to myself that Maine, Massachusetts, Vermont have already done it, Rhode Island and New York are thinking of doing it. I don't think we need a study for five years to find out whether we want to do this and find out by then, we've already missed the vote, so if we do have to study it, could it be something that's done expeditiously and not dragged on and on and on and pushed under the rug? And those are my concerns.
As far, the only data, strict one we know is the casinos, they do have to report in their slot gaming every month to the state of Connecticut, so as those reports do come in, they are accurate about slot gaming only, the table games, they do not report in, so some of those numbers are sometimes estimates from different sources, but the slots, we do get the actual data from the machines. And the other things are bills that I've heard of too, that are in committee and there'll be opportunities for public hearings over the next month and the language will get worked out over the next, what, March and April, and then we'll start voting on most of these issues, May and June, that make it out of committee, so there'll be a lot, a lot of stuff going through, and I appreciate not just you and the other councilors letting us know how you feel on these topics. As the bills change, people sometimes have different feelings and it's always good to hear from folks.
I would say you highlighted all of our largest problems that we face in Connecticut, the teachers pension being one of the largest and being a person that sat on our town council and made decisions just like you guys make every year on how to fund our pension and how to fund it responsibly, I'm in the same boat as you. I feel like this, this was a state issue and we did fight that last year, we didn't want to pass on a bad pension or, you know, down to council level, down to certain towns, so I'm with you on that, I think that's going to be a fight, I think it's also part of the taking of, you know, how do you eat an elephant one bite at a time type of mentality, that anyone that tells you they're solving our problems in a week is not being genuine, because it is a huge problem, we haven't paid for our bills for a long time. As far as casinos go, that, that to me was an easy number, everyone assumed in the count, and the casinos assumed that they were going to lose an X amount of business just based on where that casino was located and where all the players come from, they know a lot of information about their customers, but they don't allow smoking in that casino and it's, it's really hurt them in a few different ways, so their numbers aren't as good as they thought they were.
Also have to pay for parking.
And you have to pay for parking, there's a lot, you can't smoke inside because they're, they're subject to state and local laws, not like with the Indian tribes, they can have smoking in there, so it's, it's a little bit of a relief for us, it hasn't worked out so well for them, so that is where that number got better. And tolls and marijuana, we will be talking about a lot and obviously we could take up the whole night talking about that, I think that's going to dominate the conversation up in Hartford, I put my opinion out there a lot, I probably don't need to say it tonight, but it's definitely, it's, those are the big things and it's, it's a different way of doing business.
Thank you. Councilor Heath and then Baumgartner.
Comment and a question. Our Conservation Commission is going to do their report on, I believe, February 26th, they'll be reporting out on plastics, so I'll make sure to send you the results. And then the second thing is, when I go in and I've read your bills, you know, at the CGA, it's like one, two sentences, it doesn't really go in depth, not yet anyways, I guess that happens down, down the road as it's being developed, but could you talk a little bit about the Green Plan, Green Bill 5002?
We didn't, that's a Democratic caucus bill, and we did not get as much information yet as we want to. Last year, there was a lot of discussion as to how to fund our energy and our environmental needs, and when we did the bipartisan budget, a lot of money was taken from energy and environmental needs to balance the budget, so that social services wouldn't be hit as hard. So my impression is that it's a way to figure out, both study, figure out what we can do about climate change and figure out what we can do about funding for environment without deciding robbing Peter to pay Paul in a very tight budget. Again, we need to make sure that we keep our social services whole, but also keep our money for clean water, you know, and keep our environmental money where it should be. Is that your impression?
Yeah, I think so, and the two sentences are always a goal, so when we enter bills, we have a stated goal and a statement of purpose, and then we have to hammer it out with 150 other people to see if they'll agree with us in any form or way where they'd be able to vote for something, so that is, that will come in front of the Energy Committee and as, you know, again, a lot of my emails have to do with the sweep that happened at the end of the year, but remember when we're making choices up there was the Medicare Savings Plan that actually eliminated a bunch of folks from losing their, their ability to get prescriptions last year, or that energy sweep, so again, although we were both against sweeping that energy fund, I think we both were, I should speak for you.
I was, yes.
We were both against it, there are choices in the end, and at the end, it was, you know, folks were calling us and I've told this story a few times, when folks call and say, you know, Representative, you don't know who I am, but I can tell you if that bill goes through as planned, in March I will be a dead person, I will not, and that, these are conversations that we have constituents all the time, and this, this past year was striking, because $2,100 used to qualify you for your, for your prescriptions to be paid for by the state of Connecticut, which meant if you made a penny over $2,100, you didn't get help from the state. In an effort to save money last year, they moved it from $2,100 down to $1,400, so imagine the amount of people that we got, and it happens, just so happens that we are, we're the recipients of the most calls in the state.
We were.
We happen to have one of the largest senior populations that fell in that donut hole, so when they were talking about energy sweeps, although we were, I was completely against them, that's, that's how they had to fix it for that year, that's how we had to do it, and it was one of the, one of the ways they were able to fix it. So again, we don't walk away from budgets always happy, we have to pick our, pick our fights and we definitely weren't going to not fight for those folks that lost that desperately needed. And it was, it wasn't dramatic, it was, it was hearing from folks that you had no idea who they were and they, when they gave you their numbers, that they made $2,000 a month and their prescriptions were 1,500, when last year, the state of Connecticut paid for the 1,500, it's called the Medicare Savings Plan, that was desperation and, you know, desperate times call for desperate measures, although I didn't agree with the sweep, it was, again, it was, there's running out of spots to get money. You saw the pension, right, Councilor Atwater? We have, we have a lot of work to do, but, but we're going to get there.
Councilor Bumgarner.
So it's, it's good to see you both.
Good to see you.
So I'd like to talk transportation, one of my favorite topics, so the previous governor, he was pretty ambitious regarding, you know, investing significantly in transportation, everything ranging from, you know, our highways to our ports to our rails, and our most recent governor, Governor Lamont, appointed the former Metro, what is it, the Metro North President to lead the DOT, so, you know, my suspicion is that the governor will now, you know, probably support doubling down in our investments in rail, and I think sometimes loss in the conversation when we're talking about Metro North and now the new Hartford line that'll go all the way up to Springfield is, you know, what are we going to do with Shoreline East? And, you know, much of that depends on what happens with Amtrak going all the way to, you know, our Stonington border with Rhode Island, but in your, you know, what are some things that maybe Connecticut can do to, you know, strengthen Shoreline East, you know, where a lot of folks, especially in Groton, you know, utilize the New London Rail Station to go into work into New Haven and maybe all the way out to New York, and then even the possibilities of extending out to Rhode Island so we can close that gap between, you know, basically TF Green Airport and New London. As you know, Boston has that rail link all the way down to Providence and then obviously you have rail going from New London to New York, and so there's a lot of commuters there and I think especially with, you know, EB's growth and, you know, in both Rhode Island and here, you know, I think there, there could be opportunities for use, you know, versus our highways becoming more and more congested, so love to hear your thoughts on that.
The race to good transportation is on, and we've seen around the country, states that invest in infrastructure are the states that win, and we know that now to be true, just Boston's big dig and a lot of the infrastructure improvements they did, making trains cheaper, which again, is going to probably in some strange way roll back towards tolls, I mean, we actually subsidize those tickets, so folks that live on the other side of the state and go to New York every day, the DOT subsidizes ticket prices, because the trains really don't cost $14 to go to the city, they're probably more like $28, so there's a subsidy that's paid for that to all happen, and a part of that comes from the DOT, so the tolls will be a big part of that discussion, how you improve infrastructure, being, being a Groton guy and a New London guy my whole entire life, we already know where the two worst points are in our, in our region, one happens to be off an exit up from me, on exit between 88 and 89, where we lose people there, where the emergency medical services are there all the time, where people are losing time in highway accidents, where I could actually sell hot dogs and lemonade in front of my house on Quarry Road every time there's an accident on 95. We know where the problem is, the DOT's recognized it, it's right where we go from three lanes to two lanes after the, the overpass between 88 and 89 and Yalan Street, we know how to fix it, we don't have the money, and that problem exists in a bunch of different towns all along 95 and all throughout our state, and we have the Waterbury, the Mixmaster, you know, if, a lot of people, they, it's a ripple effect, you fix your infrastructure, folks come and visit more, and, or they go out and they use restaurants more, so I'm 100% towards fixing the infrastructure, we have to get on it, we know we have a problem, but, you know, we can at least look to states around us as examples, and I think it's going to, that's going to be what drives it.
I sit on transportation, I can tell you, as you probably remember from that committee, there's an awful lot of folks from Fairfield County who sit there, we talk a lot about rail, fees, prices, right amount of service, so I think it's important to have at least one vote from Southeastern Connecticut to say, what about us, what about Shoreline East? I would love if we get to TF Green from, from New, from New London. Hi, Senator. And then, you know, last year in our budget, we had to, we put $650 million into improvements for our roads, not counting the bonding money for bridges, like the Gold Star Bridge that's already there, so our transportation needs, we know not just on 80, exit 89 on 95, we all know where 95 and 395 meet, the troubles that we have there, the loss of life we've had there, and the amount of accidents that we had there. I think I sat in 20 minutes of traffic today over in Hartford, because some good folks were moving snowbanks, because it did snow a lot more up there, from 84, so that was, that was my delay, that when we have, a three-lane highway went down to one lane, and I just happened to be going through at that moment, when we have those issues in the highways, it just creates so many, so many. many, so much trouble. And a lot of our businesses talk about coming here, talk about how hard it is to get from, let's say, here in Groton to the airport, or to how hard, how long it takes to get from Hartford to New Haven. If you want to go from New Haven to Stanford, good luck. It's something we desperately need to, to work on. It does cost money. And hopefully, with Lamont, working with the House and the Senate, we can get some improvements on some of these big issues.
Thank you. Welcome, Senator Summers.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you for coming. We were, they gave brief intro, and then the counselors were just asking questions. So I said one more question, then we'll go to you for your intro if you'd like. I just wanted to talk to you too, because I see you have a bill about students in the state receiving high-quality skills and training. So teacher in me is curious where that's going. Is that a, is that a caucus bill as well, that the Democratic Caucus introduced?
It is a large Democrat House caucus bill. From my understanding, a lot of the discussions had to do to make sure that we invest in the pipeline, the education pipeline, to make sure that our, our students are prepared, not only for college and the military, but also very much prepared for the, the jobs of today, the manufacturing jobs, the jobs that, that we all know are right here at EB, the jobs that you help so much in Grasso Tech, and our other tech schools, so that we can reach out to our businesses, get the right equipment and the right training for tomorrow's jobs.
Great.
That bill's in direct response to what, what good has been happening. You know, once you, once you get metrics back from a program that you started, it's, it's a good thing. And I think Electric Boat has been very positive about the EMO pipeline. I work for Hillary Company, sheet metal manufacturing. We've used it. So it's, we've been able to lean on them, and they actually connect us to folks that, that are within our industry. And we find out information that we may not have found out otherwise. And the employees that they, that they produce, and are good employees that come in knowing how to, we like to say, read a tape measure. Hopefully, you can do that when you walk into the door for a construction job. And now they're actually knowing how to program a CNC machine. So I think it's been greatly successful.
Great, thank you. Okay, Senator Summers, would you like to lead off with any introduction before we have questions?
Sure. Well, thank you for letting us have the opportunity to come in. And I'm really here to listen to what your needs are. We can certainly talk about the different bills that we put in in our various committees. This year, I have the pleasure of being the Assistant Republican Leader. And also, I sit on Public Health as a ranking member appropriations. And I believe my subcommittees are going to be Education and Health and Human Services. I also sit on Planning and Development and Commerce. So I have many, many bills. I know you just spoke about a caucus bill. You're probably going to see a lot of different versions of that same bill. I myself have two, to expand our EMO program to other things outside of manufacturing, and also to try to reinstitute the carpentry program at our technical high school here locally, because of such a demand. A lot of the decisions that are made, are made years before, and government does not have an ability to really react quickly. And therefore, our carpentry program was, I guess, sent to Norwich, but that leaves very little opportunity for students here, because there's no busing to Norwich. I'm also interested in, as far as that's concerned, to look at establishing a controlled environment agricultural program for what we're seeing now, how produce is raised in indoor greenhouses, and hemp, and possibly, if we have the legalization of marijuana, people will need to know how to grow that. And that's a program that's being offered in other states. And I think it's something that should be looked at, at our technical high schools and our community colleges. So some different approaches. I think you're going to see a lot of different versions of the same goal this session. So.
Other questions? Counselor Aubrey?
I'd like to ask the same question of you that I put onto the others. Locally, we have a pretty serious parking situation with, as our industries are growing. And I'm wondering if there's anything on the pot of the state that can be done to help with parking garages?
Well, I think you'd have to identify where the parking garages are that you would like to have established. And there's always an opportunity to ask for funding. There's just not a lot of opportunity of funding. That's one of the problems that we have. But in order to really request something for the town, you guys would have to get together and figure out where you want to have your parking garage, what is it going to look like, what the cost is. And we certainly, the three of us, could go back and try to establish funding. There is funding for certain transit programs. There is funding that you can get through bonding. But that's one of the reasons why I wanted to meet a little bit earlier, so we could get our bonding requests in before the deadline, which was Friday. But there's always an opportunity for negotiation, to try to look at what grants are available, et cetera, as we move along in the process. So if you do have ideas specifically on parking garages that you would like to see established, right now, have you guys already talked about it, and you have plans? Or is this just?
No, just, just something that.
So if you get together as a council, and you come up with a plan, I mean, if it's locally with a business, we certainly can look at, you know, establishing some kind of program for, if they're a job creator, to try to help them with infrastructure issues that we have. I'm working on one in Stonington right now. And that's something that I'm sure we could revisit. We seem to be better when we have a more finalized plan as to what you'd like. I know parking in Mystic is an issue. I hear it all the time, which is a good thing and a bad thing. But happy to help once you get your plans more finalized.
Mr. Burr?
I was just going to mention that EB is doing a parking and a traffic studies, two separate studies right now. Once those are completed, they're supposed to meet with Mayor Hedrick and I to go over the results. And that might give us a little more insight as to where to go from there.
Great.
Counselor Franco?
I've heard from a lot of constituents that they're concerned about the school funding, the school building funding from the state, as the state is so tight with money, that are we still sure we're getting the money?
We're still, it's all bonded, still bonded out with the money.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Zepair?
You know, I don't know what kind of studies you have on the legalization of marijuana, and the health impact of using marijuana. Tobacco, the state of Connecticut now takes advantage of having won a suit against the tobacco companies because of the damage it's spent on so many people, and the state has been paying for their healthcare. Marijuana, when you smoke marijuana, you get carbon monoxide from that. And carbon monoxide decreases your ability to heal wounds. It decreases your ability to oxygenate the heart when you're having an occlusive event. And also, you're inhaling a hot gas. So I imagine that would produce, and not imagine, I, I, I'm fairly certain that that produces bronchitis very much like tobacco does. Now marijuana does not have nicotine, so it doesn't have the vasospastic effect of nicotine. But it does have the irritant to the bronchial tubes, the bronchial mucosa. And it does have the carbon monoxide, both of which are toxic and set patients up. So has anybody looked at this and said, hey, maybe we should back down on this approach of legalizing marijuana? Maybe it's going to cause as much trouble as the tobacco thing did, and we have sued the tobacco industry for what they have done to our people. Are we now opening the door for a new industry to do more of the same?
I would say, I'm, I'm actually opposed to it. So I would say yes. I, I think that we're, what's concerning to me is, if you look back when they actually, the opiate industry convinced our Congress in, in the early 90s that opiates were not addictive, citing one study over and over and over again with everybody, that opiates absolutely, the greatest thing about this opiate, this new opiate called OxyContin, was, was that it wasn't addictive. If you look at a lot of the studies that are coming out now about the cannabis, they're saying the same exact thing. Only as a, a former coach of many different sports, knowing a lot of kids in their 20s that tell me they can't work an electric boat, because they absolutely cannot stop smoking marijuana, that just leads me to believe that it, that it possibly is addictive. And I get, I get the fact that, to me, a lot of folks say that, you know, well, it's only marijuana. And I know people that have been smoking for 40 years, and they run businesses, and they're very successful. The only difference with their marijuana is, was about 7% when they grew up. And we're seeing marijuana now THC levels around 30%. The other part about it is, if you have an underlying mental condition, like schizophrenia, or bipolarism, anything like that, if you look at the, the studies coming out of Denver, Colorado, violent crime rose 13 and 1/2% from the time they've, they've instituted the legalization, which that, and nobody figured that. Most folks were saying, well, it's only marijuana, and people get lazy. So wouldn't you rather have a guy that's just kind of sleeping and lazy? That's not always the effect for everybody. Drugs affect a lot of people in a lot of different ways. I'm not saying that, you know, again, it's federally illegal, so, so Electric Boat can't change their laws and say that you can work there and smoke. So it is that mountain, though. It's that wave of feeling that the wave's going to crash, because they're gonna, it seems like it's got enough legs to pass this year. And how do you defend against it? And how do you make sure that you legislate it, so, so kids aren't getting a hold of it? The other part's the mixed message part of it. When, when we as legislators make something legal, as at 21 years old, it's almost telling someone that it's safe to me. Because that's how I feel about certain things that I would use. If, if they made it a law and said it was okay to use, it must be safe. The only problem that you connect with that is, you just can't work at any job that's defense-related. And they, they do hair tests at EB, which means that, you know, once you smoke marijuana, after three months, that's when your hair stops showing that you've smoked marijuana. So it's, it is a slippery slope. The, I, I am a wait-and-see guy. I think Colorado did it five years ago. I personally would like to see 10 years of study. And I, I don't, and missing the boat on what? I mean, the estimates now are $30 million in revenue. They, last year, they were, they thought it was going to be $180 million, which would have meant Connecticut residents would have been smoking 50 metric tons of marijuana a year, which, I, I don't know, maybe that would be some people's new full-time job, because that seems like a lot of marijuana to smoke. But, so there are two, there's two ways to look at it. To me, it's been illegal for a very long time. We've missed the boat on the Colorado experiment. If you were going to be the first one in the country to legalize it, yeah, you would see the $1 billion in tax revenue over the last five years. That's not going to happen for Connecticut, since it's surrounded by states that already legalized it. So I am against it. But I, I think if it is something that's inevitable, because there's a lot of folks that, that are on the other side of this, and they, our, our new governor, it sounds like he wants to have it go through, we have to play some defense and at least make it, you know, folks aware of, of what's happening.
Although I do feel differently about it than my colleague, Representative Dela Cruz. I think that over the last two years, that, that we've all been in the House, and Senator Summers in the Senate, we have seen studies from Colorado, we've seen studies from folks who are pro-marijuana, studies from folks who are anti-marijuana. The amount of data we have is never a problem at the Capitol. We always have an awful lot of data. It becomes, what's the right law? And what do the majority of folks want to do? I think we, we will see a new experiment with our neighbors to the north, Massachusetts, as it's recently become not only legal there, but you can get your marijuana recreationally up, I believe it's in, just north of Springfield. So I guess you can go to the casino there, go a little north, and then get some recreational marijuana as well. But we will see, we know what's happened here with gaming. We know what's happened with policing. We've seen in Colorado what's happened with policing, and the pros and cons. And we're seeing that in Massachusetts, so that we can have the right, the right bill for Connecticut. And as those bills come out, if you feel as strongly as you do against it, you know, we can arrange for you to testify publicly. I know you do great testimony from going to law school with you. We've both seen how that, how you can advocate well for your clients. And as a physician, you have some extra knowledge that you can share with the committees as it gets voted out.
Well, I appreciate your comments. And coming from public health, the Public Health Committee last year was very concerned about the legalization of marijuana, as they are this year. I can never advocate smoking anything, because anytime you inhale something of combustible material, it takes time off of your life. So we have some serious issues to deal with in public health. I think that we're going to see them come and have quite a colorful public hearing. And a lot of it has to do with vaping. Vaping is a big issue. It's become a national epidemic. So how do you try to regulate vaping? And you're saying that legalizing smoking marijuana is okay. Those are things that public health is wrestling with. There is a lot of data, if you haven't had a chance to look at it. And I know you can be overwhelmed with data. But if you just Google marijuana and the effects of marijuana on the adolescent brain, it will frighten you to the point where you're going to, if you are someone who is advocating for marijuana under 21, you're going to rethink it. There are three bills that I know of concerning marijuana. We are going to request that each one of those bills comes through public health. Last year, there was a thought of bypassing public health, just going to general law, just going to judiciary, not having it come back to public health, so public health can weigh in. So I know that the committee feels very strongly that no matter what bill it is, wherever it comes out of, it has to come through public health, so public health can weigh in. There is mixed messages. I do agree with Representative Dela Cruz. But the numbers are there, probably in the legislature, to formally pass it. I can tell you, one of the bills that we had in public health that we just screened was to add chronic pain as a indication for use for medicinal marijuana. That was rejected last year. Public Health tried to send it to the right cognizant committee, which is not public health. It's DCP, which has a special physician group that decides, based on clinical studies, what the indications are. You can't just say marijuana helps pain if you don't have the clinical data to back it up. And it was rejected last year, and they said no. But now that bill is trying to come through public health and sort of go around the process that is established for indications for use. So it's going to be sort of an interesting, I guess, collision of viewpoints, as far as if it does become legal, how do you regulate it, as far as how do you trace it? You'd have to have a very specific traceability, almost like the liquor industry where everything is traced. How do you guarantee that it's not sold to somebody underneath 21 years old? What are the fines associated if you do? And the revenue numbers that you were given last year are just, they, they're just bogus. They're just, they, they're, it's pie in the sky. So the real revenue values are much more in line with what Representative Dela Cruz has said than what we were told last year. It was like $180 million when Colorado was only selling 90, and they were the first people out there. There still is a black market, because the marijuana that is sold legally recreationally is so expensive, because it's so taxed, that there still is this undercurrent of illegal marijuana sold. And as Representative Dela Cruz said, it's a much stronger version than, you know, what, you know, you heard of growing up as a kid. So there are, you know, pros and cons. We do know that there is a state that has come up with a blood test to test for active marijuana in the, in the bloodstream. So if somebody's pulled over, I'm not sure exactly how they do it, but you're able to tell from the blood if, if it's active or old. So that's one of the things that's concerning. And also, as a municipality, think about the liability. If you have somebody who is, you know, driving a snowplow and gets into an accident, if there's active THC versus old THC, what does that do? And it becomes very complicated very quickly. I don't think, honestly, we would be having this conversation about legalizing marijuana if there wasn't revenue involved. If it was just to do it, to do it, it would be a different story. But, you know, we'll have to see how it all pans out. But I do think there are the votes in the House, based on the makeup of the legislature, I'm sorry, in the, in the whole body, to, to push it, push it forward. So that's kind of where we are. And, you know, we can keep you updated on the bills and where they are. And if you have input, and you want to submit testimony, please do. Coming from a counselor, it has weight as to how you would handle that in your community.
I just want to leave you with one stat, because in my head, I, and I forgot to say this, was, we are 5% of the world's population, and we take 85% of the world's prescription opiate medicine. And we take 65% of the world's illicit and illegal drugs. I mean, and people in our group are always asked to stand up and say, hey, I'm Joe, and I'm an addict, or whatever. It may be time for America to stand up and say that we have a problem. It's 5% of the world's population, yet we take 85%. I don't see how this ends up paring that number down. You know, so a lot of the work our group does is trying to make that number come down. And I feel like that number's going to increase when you make it legal. But, you know, again, everything we talked about, I think that's, those are the kind of things that if you don't like a law, and it looks like it's going to pass, then you put up kind of, not roadblocks, but you make it harder for folks to, to get their hands on it. And I don't know how that, because it's illegal now, and folks still get their hands on it. I'd like to be invested money in, in different things. But here we are.
And your group as community speaks out.
Yes.
And as far as information and data on marijuana use and the effects on teenagers, our own GASP organization just put out a very nice very nice concise, one-page flyer that I have actually hanging in my classroom, um, that talks about the effect on the teenagers. We have to go to Counselor Heath, Counselor Zepari, then we'll come back to you.
Um, in our packet tonight, we actually have a, a subject, um, that we'll be discussing, Brownfield's Assessment Grant. Uh, so I just wanted to, um, make sure to put that out there. If, uh, anything comes along that wants to cut these kinds of grants, or, um, you know, shift the money around, I think this information indicates, suggests that we do have serious health concerns with some of our neighborhoods. Um, so, just wanted to let you comment on that.
And if you let us know when you're applying for grants, we can always be of assistance, um, to try to help as much as we can.
Thank you. Um, unless someone else wants to go that hasn't spoken, we'll go back to Counselors of Perry.
I, uh, recently, uh, received an email from a friend who sent me a copy of a Kiplinger report on the ten worst states to retire in Connecticut. Connecticut was, uh, in the United States, pardon me. Connecticut was rated number two among the, as the second worst state in the Union to retire in, because of the tax structure in municipalities and in the state. Uh, it's a major problem, and I just would, recognizing that, I would urge you to, as you're considering doing things for various, various people, that whenever you do something for someone or for some group, you take the funds away from other people. Uh, so whatever you do that is good, you do equally bad, maybe distributing it among a larger source of, of people, but you're taking their money away. Uh, and so I would urge you to be cautious and to be sure that what you're doing is for the common good. Uh, and, uh, I know, I, I, I know I'm talking to the choir, because I know how responsible all three of you are. Uh, but I, I, I would hope that we could get a grip on some of the spending that we have from the state. That's all I had to say.
Are there any other counselors who would like to ask any questions? We've been at this just about an hour now, so we've taken a lot of our representatives' time. Did you want to add something else?
Uh, the only thing I wanted to add to the discussion about the marijuana, I think if anything was to go through, probably never would happen, but your brain is developing until you're twenty-five years old. So, I don't think it should be anything that's available until you're twenty-five years old. Then if you want to be stupid, be stupid.
Um, if I could just, um, say that there's a lot of information on, uh, the effects of marijuana on the public health website. If anybody's interested, you can go look there, and there's also all kinds of information on opiates and, um, the opiate bill that we passed, and resources, et cetera, on the Connecticut Public Health website. Um, as far as, um, the Brownfield Grants, that's something that we, um, felt really strongly about in the, um, in the Senate. I remember the Brownfield Bill passed at like ten seconds to midnight. We were able to get that called. Um, it's a great, great opportunity for redevelopment, and that's something that we want to make sure is, is accurately and appropriately funded. Um, as far as Counselors Zepari and your comments, I think, um, you know, I don't want to speak for my colleagues, but that's something that we wrestle with every day, knowing that, um, you know, last, over the last budget, a lot of people don't know this. I know, knocking on doors, people didn't know that the legislature, it was, um, it came out of the Republican Senate to offer, um, incentives for those who are retired. One of the things that we did was, this year, you're not taxed on your social security if you make under a hundred thousand dollars as a couple, seventy-five thousand dollars as an individual. And we also have a plan that was adopted in the budget to phase out the tax on pensions over the next seven years. It's, we couldn't do it in one full sweep, but to slowly phase it in, and that was something that, when we were in our budget process, we realized, you know, we want to keep folks that are retired here for various reasons, but, um, you know, if we offer that relief, what does it do on the other side? How do we make up the difference? So, that's something that we struggle with, you know, every single day, when we look at the budget and appropriations, whether it be education or special education. Um, and, um, one of the things that I would like to see is we have many, many programs, but they're never reviewed. You know, they establish something, they go forward, and, um, I can think of five off the top of my head, that they never look back to see if it's working and if it makes financial sense. Um, so those are things that I just want you to know. I think everybody that's up there thinks about that, 'cause it's always, you know, you're, you're dealing with very limited dollars. We don't generate enough revenue. Um, there's a lot of expenses that haven't been taken care of for years before we ever even ran for council, that we're trying to now make up for. So, we do really think about that.
I know, I, I, as I said, I, I have full confidence that the three of you do think about it, but we wouldn't be the second worst in the country if somebody before you were not squandering our funds and making commitments that are very difficult for us to meet. And now we're seeing new taxes being imposed, because the state is in such dire straits. Um, so I, 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 I just think that you, sooner or later, we have to learn to live within our, our means.
Counselors, I'm sorry, you should come up and testify to that.
Oh, yeah.
That'd be awesome.
I actually put a bill in to kind of address that. It's, it's, it was a, it's a, it's a bill that's gonna try to address why we're losing folks. And, again, I think, uh, it's an easy decision when you're the person that's retiring. Uh, whenever I ask someone that's my age, and they say, this is just too expensive, I'm retiring, it usually follows with, as soon as my kids get through school.
Yeah.
Or as soon as I retire with a job with a pension, 'cause I'm gonna go to a state that provides no pensions and really bad education, and I'm gonna live next to, I'm gonna live in a neighborhood where the guy that patrols my, my neighbor, my neighborhood, live, gets welfare and fe-federal earned income tax credit. So, I think, uh, there's a couple of different ways to look at that. Whether, whether we're a state probably, because it, it's an obvious dollar amount, right? You're, you're retired, we're gonna tax your pension, but there's also, there's a cascading amount of reasons why we are more expensive for a lot of different ways. So, I, I think, once we get, and that, that's what the bill is designed to do, to study how we're losing and why we're losing. Now, folks are mad up here, and we don't even know why we're getting beat. Uh, but, again, I, I even had a suggestion where, I think our police, if we're paying to subsidize police in Orlando, Florida, well, we should have our Grotton Town Batch with a little Orlando stripe right down the center of it, uh, because that's what we're doing in effect. We're, we're actually subsidizing our direct competition. Uh, my bill is gonna address those things, and, and hopefully, so that conversation becomes a little different, because if, if, on paper, you are absolutely right. If you move to Florida right now, you'd probably save a few dollars, but, uh, the person that did the same exact job you did down in Florida will certainly not be retiring like you're retiring. So, eventually, this all hits a wall, and I'm just trying to prevent that before it actually hits, so. But I, I like the comment, it's, it's, it's needed, uh, but we have to get to the bottom of why that is. And it's not always, sometimes it's not always what we're doing, sometimes it's outside forces.
Counselor Schmidt, and then I have one question.
All right. Well, of course, to me, uh, very near and dear to my heart is tourism.
Really?
And, uh...
I got an email that...
I find it so appalling that so many, certainly the legislators from our part of Connecticut seem to get the whole concept that tourism really is an income producer for the state, that it brings in tax money, that it subsidizes a lot of our social services and different things because of the dollars that it does bring in. But, from the other parts of the state, they don't seem to realize that, and they keep cutting back tourism and cutting back, cutting back, cutting back. Whenever tourism seems to get ahead, they say, that funding should go to the general fund. And they cut back, and cut back, and cut back, and... I'm just concerned that there, we've come to a point where people really have to focus on this, and, um, I don't know what you can do further than you've done already. I know you're working very hard, but I just hope that, um, the speakers panel, which is meeting tomorrow at Foxwoods, that it will have some impact on what is being done in the state.
And I look forward to your update after that, and my committee meetings in Hartford, so I won't be able to join you in Hartford. But you always send us such great updates, um, and we look forward to continuing to work on tourism funding. I wish our colleagues on the other side of the state would agree with us, but we'll, we'll keep working on them.
I will say, um, based on the revenues projections that I've seen, it looks as though we're on, on point to generate, uh, between what we passed last year and a percentage of, uh, the hotel tax going towards tourism. We're on par to be close to twelve million dollars for tourism, which I know is nothing, but it's a lot more than it was. Um, and if we could get, uh, the approval on the casinos in East Windsor, we would be closer to fifteen million right now. So, I, I want to say that, um, I'm a member of the Tourism Caucus. I just finished, uh, their first meeting, and there are some new faces from the other end of the state that seem to be, um, very interested in tourism, um, throughout the state, and they seem to understand that the investment is returned in the same year or in, within the same eighteen months. And, um, I'm hopeful that, uh, with the new administration, we might be able to, uh, pursue, um, additional funding, which is so necessary. So, uh, again, I kept saying, if we had invested our pension money in tourism, and you get three times your, you know, dollar in the same year, we wouldn't be in this financial situation that we're in now. So, um, the good news is that we have some, some new folks from the, you know, that have been newly elected that seem very interested in tourism, so we, we have to remain hopeful that it'll be a definite focus.
Well, I, I don't know if you're aware, but that was how tourism was funded thirty-five years ago, through the hotel tax, so that it was not really a tax on the citizens of Connecticut, but on the visitor, so that that funding coming in was, was very important. But then it was something that was taken away by the legislature. So, whatever it is, it certainly is no guarantee that they will continue it, but it was a wonderful idea then, and it's a good idea now.
All right. Well, thank you very much on behalf of the council and on behalf of the townspeople for coming out and updating us on where you're going and what your plans are and your goals. And we appreciate all the work you do up there in Hartford for us, and we will be in touch, I'm sure, when we have questions or concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you all three of you for coming down.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, we are on to item five B. And this is twenty nineteen thirty-one F Y E., twenty eighteen CAFER. I've had a request for a quick recess, so we're gonna take five minutes. Okay, uh, we are back with, our recess is done, and we are on to, uh, twenty nineteen dash thirty-one, the CAFER. And Counselor Franco, would you read that resolution, please, on page thirteen? The motion, please.
I make a motion to recommend a resolution to accept and file the F Y E. two thousand eighteen Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, CAFER, the auditor's report, and the management letter. I assume move.
Seconded.
Seconded by Atwater. And we have with us Counselor, uh, Counselor, Finance Director Landry? Would you like a new job? Finance Director Landry, would you introduce your, your people, please?
Yes, on my right, I have Dee Morrison, she's the Treasurer Accounting Manager, and I have Vanessa Rosita, she's a partner in the audit firm of Bloom Shapiro.
All right, thank you. So, I just, um, have a couple of, um, items I wanted to speak, and then I'm gonna turn it over to, uh, Vanessa. You should have received five documents in total, a CAFER, two state and single federal audits, which were the blue covers, the auditor's communication letter, and also the management letter. And one of the things I wanted to speak on is why we have to do the audit. The charter requires that we have an annual audit, and the state of Connecticut also requires that we publish a complete set of financials within six months of the end of the fiscal year. And the CAFER has, um, a, a couple of very important usage. It's a communication and information docket, document. It gives you a snapshot of what has happened o-over the past year. It's also a tool that's used by investors and creditors. We do put together the, uh, the CAFER, which is a Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, and we submit it to the state for, excuse me, to the G F O A., uh, for the award. This is the twenty-fifth year that we've prepared the CAFER, and we have received twenty-four awards to date. Uh, the CAFER has several sections to it, but I'm gonna turn it over to Vanessa to go through those sections for you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. Um, just in case you didn't bring all of the five documents that Cindy listed, I do have a summary presentation that I put, um, on each of your seats, so that's what I'm going to be talking to tonight. If you do have specific questions for me on, you know, a certain page number or what have you, just please interrupt me during my presentation, or afterwards, I can entertain questions also. Okay, so, um, as far as what I'm going to be talking about tonight, I'm gonna go quickly over the scope of our audit and the standards that we follow. Um, one of the documents that you did receive was the required auditor's communication, so I'm just gonna talk about that and highlight, um, certain items from it. I will go over the CAFER, I'll explain the different sections, as Cindy mentioned, and also go over some financial treetop highlights, um, of certain funds. I will talk about the federal and the state single audit, and then go over the management letter, and lastly, talk about some upcoming G A S V standards that we have to look forward to. Okay? So, page three of my presentation, uh, the scope of our audit was to perform an audit of the financial statements. We opine on the governmental activities, each major fund and the aggregate remaining fund information of the CAFER. We do our audit under auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America, and also government auditing standards. We performed a federal single audit and a state single audit, because you do receive federal and state grants, so we're required to perform these services. Federal single audit is performed under uniform guidance, and the state single audit is performed under the applicable state general statutes. As far as the required auditor's communication, um, we're required to let you know that all of the significant accounting policies are listed in note one of the CAFER, so it's a good summary, if you will, of all the, um, accounts and, um, line items in the financial statement. We did adopt two new standards this year, G A S V. seventy-five, which is accounting and financial reporting for other post-employment benefits. These are the benefits that the retirees receive. And then also G A S V. eighty-five, which was entitled Omnibus two thousand seventeen. This is basically a terrifying standard. Nothing really significant changed in your CAFER, just some terminology. There's various accounting estimates inherent in your financial statements, um, so we do look at these estimates to make sure there's no management bias. Um, the net pension liability, net O P E D liability, you utilize an actuary to help you calculate the, these amounts, um, based upon assumptions determined by management. Um, also claims incurred but not reported for your medical, heart, and hypertension and workers' comp, you also utilize a third party to help you calculate that. Also, the landfill liability. Management does, on their own, um, estimate the allowance for doubtful accounts on receivables based upon historical information, and also, uh, estimates the useful lives of capital assets to calculate depreciation based upon industry standards. Uh, there, we did not encounter any difficulties during our audit. We didn't have any disagreements with management. Management did not consult with another accounting firm for a second opinion, if you will. Um, there were no uncorrected misstatements during the audit, and at the end of the audit, we require both management of the town and the Board of Education to sign a representation letter, basically, you know, taking responsibility for the audit. And speaking of responsibilities, um, so just delineating the responsibilities on page six of the presentation. So, basically, management's responsible, responsible for the entire CAFER except for our audit opinion. So, management is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements in accordance with U.S. GAAP, and also for the design, implementation, and maintenance of internal control to prevent and detect fraud and misstatements. Uh, we are responsible, Bloom Shapiro is responsible to express opinions on the financial statements, and also to plan and perform our audit to provide reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements are free of material misstatement. So, that term reasonable assurance basically means that we utilize materiality and, uh, risk assessment to perform our audit. We're not auditing every single transaction that the town had during the fiscal year. So, the results of our audit is we did issue a clean opinion, or clean opinions, on the opinion units of the town. Um, we call these unmodified opinions. It's the highest form of an opinion that you can receive, and something that you're well-used to, to receiving. As far as the different parts of the CAFER, um, there's three, three main parts, if you will. Um, so there's the introductory section, which has a letter of transmittal, it has the listing of principal officials that were in place on June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, it has an organizational chart, um, and also the CAFER award that Cindy spoke about. it has an organizational chart, and also the CAFER award that Cindy spoke about that you received for last year. The financial section starts with the independent auditor's report, it's followed by the management's discussion and analysis, which is a great ten or twelve-page document to read along with looking at the financial statements. So that is written by, by Cindy and her team to kind of put some context behind the numbers that are in the financial statements. Following the MDNAs, the basic financial statements, then the notes to the financial statements. Following the notes to the financial statements, there's something called Required Supplementary Information. So that's where you'll find the general fund budget information and some interesting historical information, if you will, on the pension and OPEB plans. After the Required Supplementary Information is the combining fund financial statements. So this is all the detail of the smaller funds, if you will, of the town. And then the last section is interesting in, in the fact that it's statistical section that has information about the revenues of the town, the debt of the town, some, and some other operational information for the past ten years. So it's nice to, you know, see what's happened over the past ten years. All right, so moving to slide eight in the presentation, just some, like I said, tree-top level information about the financial results of the town. So the first set of financial statements are the governmental activities. These are all the funds of the town aggregated together and then bought, brought on the full accrual basis of accounting, so all of the long-term assets and long-term liabilities are presented in this, in this statement. So on a governmental activities basis, your net position increased from the prior year five point three one five million to a hundred and forty point one one nine million. And some of the things to mention in the governmental activities, capital assets decreased slightly to approximately two hundred and nine million just because of depreciation expense. And then debt increased about three million dollars as a result of the fact that you did issue bonds last year. So there was a net increase of three million. The general funds I'll talk about next, the total fund balance of the general fund was twenty point three million, which is an increase of six and a half million from the prior year. I've also included page numbers here, so you could go back and check my numbers. Headed sign fund balance is eighteen point eight nine million, which is fifteen percent of the fiscal year and two thousand and nineteen adopted general fund budget. Budgetary revenues came in eight point six one greater than budget, and general fund budgetary expenditures came in nine hundred and seventy-one thousand less than budget. The tax collections were ninety-eight point eight four percent of the current year grant list, this is not including the prior year delinquent. Your capital improvements fund, fund balance increased about three and a half million to eight point one seven million. This is a fund where you did issue the bonds that I talked about before, so you did have an increase of six point six nine million because of that bond issuance. And then the remainder non-major governmental funds, so again, these are all the smaller funds of the town aggregated together, the fund balance of those funds decreased six hundred and sixty-two thousand for a total fund balance of all of those funds of about seven and a half million. You have three internal service funds. The fleet reserve fund net position decreased four hundred and twenty-seven thousand to three point one five million. The health insurance fund net position increased nine hundred and eighty-six thousand to six point three three nine million. And lastly, the workers' compensation fund net position increased one point two two eight million to a negative net position of nine hundred and eighty-four thousand. And then you, for your pension and OPEB trust funds, your fiduciary funds, your pension trust fund, this is the fund that you use to accumulate benefits to pay the pensioners, the net position increased four point seven million to a hundred and nineteen million. And then the OPEB trust fund, this is the fund that you use to accumulate assets to pay the OPEB liability, the net position increased one point seven million to eighteen point one million. So good news in those two funds. The market was good to you last year. I mentioned earlier in the presentation that there were two new standards implemented, so in, in accordance with GASV statement seventy-five, we did have to restate beginning net position. So you did have an OPEB asset of six hundred and forty-eight thousand, so we had to get rid of that and bring on an OPEB liability of forty point two million. So this standard basically took you from measuring the OPEB liability on a funding basis to now measuring the OPEB liability on a long-term basis. Your total net pension liability for the town is nineteen point three million, the plan is eighty-four point eighty percent funded, and then your net OPEB liability is forty-one point three million, that plan is thirty point forty-five percent funded. And then in the previous session, you were talking a little bit about the state plan and, you know, the state's plans to maybe gift some of that liability to the town, so those numbers are here. Even though these are not liabilities of the town, they're required to be disclosed in your financial statement, so this is the liability for Grahan Teachers that the state is responsible for. So the pension piece of that is a hundred and twenty-six million. And then newly disclosed this year is the OPEB piece, that is thirty-two point four percent, all right, sorry, thirty-two point four million. Does anybody have any questions about the CAFER before I go on to the two single audits?
Councilor Heath.
Just a quick question. What is, I know that, that we rank kind of high in regards to other towns with our pension liability percentage funding. At thirty point four five percent for OPEB liability, how does that rate against other towns?
So just as, just as you are, most towns are more heavily funded in their pension. I think OPEB was kind of something that came about a lot later, measuring that. So I don't, I would say that you're probably about where everyone else is. I think there's some that are up to eighty, there's some that are at three percent. So I think the important part is that you are starting to put away assets to fund the liability.
Thank you.
Councilor, I'll go to Mr. Burton, then Councilor Atwater.
Just to mention, I know we looked at it about a year ago on the OPEB liability, I think we're a little higher than that. I think as of a year ago, if I'm wrong, we were in the top few in the state for OPEB liability.
Yeah, with the, with our H and A, it was actually, we were in the top three.
Right, but we can get an updated number for this year, and could it do?
That's what I thought, too. I thought we were higher up because we had started early to throw money into the account. Councilor Atwater.
Just going back to page eleven, Workers' Compensation Fund. Am I reading this correctly, that if we put in a hundred, one point two two eight million, and we still have a negative figure, that if we put in another one point two two, we would be in a positive situation?
Right, so you start, so last year you ended with net position of a negative two point two one two million. So you did, there was positive results this year, so now the net position is only, only nine hundred and eighty-three thousand.
Is there a reason?
I think this year, from what I'm looking at, I think you did have a liability in that fund for heart and hypertension, so I feel like the liability decreased significantly this year, right?
It did. We had one former employee that passed away, so we're no longer paying heart and hypertension benefits for that employee.
So, so that number then really isn't something like planning for deferred pension costs, this is something more on a, on a current basis if, if we have a claim? And then I, I have one other question, if I can find it, give me a minute here. Yes, on page seven. I guess one of my pet peeves is using acronyms and so forth. Would it be too much to ask in the future if you had MD plus A, and then in parentheses, put what it is, or the RSI, then put Required Supplemental Information, just so that's immediately clear to, to my aging brain rather than...
I feel like in the, in the governmental arena, everything's an acronym, so I could absolutely do that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, looks like we're good for questions, so when you're ready.
Okay, so back to page fourteen. So as I mentioned before, we perform a federal single audit because the town does receive federal funds, so we are required to test various programs based upon the compliance circular. So we tested the special education cluster, the child nutrition cluster, and Title I, so these are all Board of Education programs. We issued a clean opinion on compliance over all three of these programs, and did not find any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, so all good results there. Also on the state single audit, same thing, based upon the state statutes, we're required to tick certain programs based upon risk and dollar threshold. We tested school readiness in competitive grant municipalities, payment in lieu of taxes on state-owned property, local capital improvement program, I'm laughing because of the acronyms, municipal grants and aid, and the alliance grant. Again, we issued clean opinions over compliance on all of these programs, and also did not find any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal controls. We do have, however, some suggestions for improvements to your controls, so that's the management letter. So there's two things that we have this year. So the first comment has to do with the Educational Grants Fund. So this is a fund that is accounted for at the Board of Education. It's basically an accounting of all the education grants. A lot of these grants are two-year grants, so there's accounts receivable and deferred revenue because it kind of goes into more than one year. So the Board of Education does all that accounting, but it does not get over to the town in a timely fashion. So we're just suggesting that the Board of Education work with the town to make sure that that information gets in the general ledger timely. And I'm sure when we have our audit planning meeting in the spring, we'll bring this up to make sure that it happens. The second comment has to do with the fraud risk assessment. We give this comment to pretty much all of our clients, it's just a good idea to look at the areas of the municipality and those that are more susceptible to fraud and cyber risk. This is something that can be done, you can contract out with a firm to do it, or you could do it in-house. It's just a best practice that we're recommending to the town.
So I have a question regarding the first suggestion for improvement with the Educational Grant Fund. There is a, you said there is gonna be a meeting, and Director Landry will be meeting with your counterpart for the Board of Ed and the representative from Bloom Shapiro, is that what I'm understanding?
Right, we'll have a planning meeting in the spring for the, for the audit for nineteen, and at that time we'll discuss this and what the Board of Ed should be doing to get that information over to us in a more timely manner.
Is there, is there a requirement that they do that? I mean, is there anything the town can do to get them to provide that information to us? Could they choose not to?
I suppose they could choose not to, but someone, someone's going to have to do it. Either we're gonna pay the auditors to do it, or they're gonna have to do it.
Okay. And then the second question dealt with the second item, the fraud risk assessment, and is that something that, is this the first time this has shown up? I'm trying to remember if it showed up last year as well.
It was in last year, and if you remember, we put in the fraud tip line.
Right.
We had put that in the budget. But the, the fraud risk assessment is on a much larger scale, and I have talked to Vanessa and other people and her staff, and I think it is something that we can look into doing in-house.
Okay.
We just need to set up some guidelines and procedures and, and look across the board to see where we want to start with the process. It would be probably a multi-year process that we would go through. The cost to have someone come in and do a, a full-blown assessment, last year when I looked at the cost, I think it was between thirty and forty thousand dollars.
So then is this something that you would put in your budget for the manager to take a look at and see where it would fall?
That would only be, we did it external, but she's recommending that, she's saying she could do it internal without an extra cost.
We're gonna try to do it internally. They're very good at giving me some suggestions or advice to help me along the way.
Great. Do any of the other councilors have questions in this area? Councilor Atwater?
On the Educational Grant Fund, and I don't know if this should be asking the town manager, there was an issue recently with the, the school board not taking people off on, removing their names from a bank account and so forth. Is there some way that we can, when you're having this meeting and so forth, can we get the school board to be more proactive in, in keeping their records straight? I mean, it seemed to me as though that was an issue of somebody not following up on something.
Mr. Burke?
I was gonna mention, they have changed practices there and adopted all recommendations.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, there's another page, I believe, we have...
Yep, the upcoming GASV standards.
Oh, our favorite page.
Yes, favorite. So next year, I don't think either of these standards are going to affect you, but of course, we look at them anyway. So Statement eighty-three has to do with if you're retiring any assets, and if there are any remediation, a pollution remediation or something like that attached to disposing of an asset, that, that liability should be recorded currently, not, you know, in a couple of years when you're going to incur that cost. Statement eighty-eight has to do if, with if you are issuing debt not to the public market, to maybe one institutional investor, or if you have a bank loan. There's just additional disclosure if these things happen. In two thousand and twenty, there's a new definition of fiduciary activities, so we'll have to look at the various funds of the town to make sure that they're in the right buckets, that the fiduciary activities that you do have are fiduciary activities, and that may be a special revenue fund, maybe it could be a fiduciary activity. And then in two thousand and twenty-one, Statement eighty-seven has to do with leases, so the GASV is following the FASV's lead in that all the operating leases, so leases that you're just paying currently on a monthly basis, like a rental, those arrangements have to be brought onto the balance sheet, so you're gonna have to capitalize the asset and also record the liability. And then Statement eighty-nine is just saying that you can no longer capitalize interest on debt incurred during a construction project. So if you issue debt for a construction project, the interest cannot be capitalized. I don't think you're doing that now, so I think that's an easy one. The GASV is also looking at examining the whole financial reporting model, so the CAFER as you know it now could be changing. So I'm hoping that that's a long way off.
So just real quick on Statement eighty-three, would this be, if you're saying retiring an asset, so if we were getting rid of an old school building, for example, and we needed to remediate?
Right.
This would include that?
That's right.
And you said, when is this going into effect?
That, next year, so six thirty nineteen.
Thank you.
I think it has, I think it's going to be more common for those municipalities that have a power plant or sewer operation or something like that.
Okay. All right, Councilor Heath.
I saw the information, and I can't find it now.
Okay.
It's big and poor. I was looking generally for the general health of the town in terms of how much we're able to take out for additional debt, or if we're moving maybe in the wrong direction. I know we took out... I know we took out additional debt recently. I just wanted to know, let's take a temperature of where we are.
As far as the debt limit?
Our ability to take out more, can we, based on the audit, handle the debt that we have?
So the state statutes say that you cannot take out more than seven times your annual receipts from taxation, so that, this is on page forty-six, I just happened to turn to it. So that's six-hundred-and-eighty-five million. So I think, you know, from a statutory, look at things, I think you're fine. I think it's more, you know, talking to your financial analyst and bond counsel.
I'm just trying to get to the debt limit.
Okay.
Okay, when you have your CAFR on page thirty-three is the debt limit, and as Vanessa had said, the state allows us, has one limit that we could not go above, and it is six-hundred-and-eighty-five million dollars, and right now, our total is fifty-eight million. And that includes all of the underlying debt that we have to disclose for the districts.
So that's page one-thirty-three.
One-thirty-three. Not that we never want to get up to that one.
No.
No. Does that answer your question?
All right, it does, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to recommend a resolution to accept and file the F Y E twenty-eighteen comprehensive annual financial report, auditor's report and management letter, seeing no further discussion. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. Thank you very much. Appreciate your explanations. Okay, we're going to change up the, thank you, we're going to change up the order of things because we have a guest with us this evening who has just arrived, so we want to let the gentleman be with us this evening. So Councilor Heed, would you read that, please?
I hereby move that the members of the Town Council Committee at the Hall, along with the Town Manager John Burt, Assistant Town Manager Bob Zagami, Planning Director John Reiner, Economic Development Manager Paige Brock, Tax Assessor Mary Gardner, Assistant Assessor Jennifer Sullivan, Finance Director Cindy Landry, and Attorney Jonathan Kaplan go into executive session to discuss strategy and/or negotiations with respect to collective bargaining with one or more bargaining units. The action is taken without prejudice.
Yes, I don't think that's correct. We're not talking about bargaining units tonight. So, so we are working on item five-G, and we're going to have a resolution to move to item five-G, which is twenty-nineteen dash fifty-four, Belle Fort Beatty, and this is a potential executive session. And Mr. Burt is getting us the resolution to go into executive session, so it will be just one moment.
I'll have the updated version on my desk.
Okay, do you have it on your phone?
I have, not on the phone.
Okay. While we're waiting, on Thursday evening, Councilor Overy, Councilor Baumgartner, and myself will be at our community center in room C one-oh-two for a meet and greet. The public is welcome to come on out and talk to the three of us and express your concerns, or just come and take a look at the new community center. So that's always interesting things. Councilor Atwater was there to take a look the other night, and he said it's big changes recently. This is from five to seven, and room C one-oh-two at the new community center, which is the old Fitch Middle School Building.
Come on down.
Come on down. Councilor Parker. Councilor Atwater mentioned earlier that you received an award. Would you like to just fill the public in while we have a minute here? You were the guest speaker.
Yes, I was the guest speaker at Saint John's Christian Church for the Dr. Martin Luther King service that they held this past Monday. They also hold it every year, so I'm throwing it out there now, they would love for the public to come and celebrate with them, or the town. It was a wonderful event, and I'm glad I had an opportunity to speak, and I hope it was inspiring for others.
It was, you gave a very nice, very nice talk. Thank you very much for doing that. You represented us well. Councilor Overy?
Rachel and I can do another poke. Remind everybody that next Monday, we will be having a meeting on the Beautification Committee, Senior Center. Come on out, we're going to hopefully have a guest speaker, and Rachel will be right there on her toes.
I believe it's, it's February fourth, right?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
February fourth.
I was a week ahead of myself.
That's okay. February fourth at five-thirty.
Anybody knows plants, come see us.
Please. We have landscaping... We have a new exhibit at UConn, at the Alexei Vashlup Gallery at UConn Avery Point, called Cross Currents, and it's a Connecticut Sea Grant-funded art exhibition. And our RTM moderator, Sima Evans, works for Connecticut Sea Grant. And it's, it's a lovely building. If you haven't been to the gallery, it's a beautiful building, and the shows are always enlightening, so I recommend checking out the exhibit at UConn Avery Point. And we have a resolution.
Can I just mention one thing?
Yes, please.
On Saturday, February second, the Super Bowl at Groton Senior Center is going to, that's happening again?
Thank you.
I will be there to volunteer, so I hope to see you guys out.
Excellent, and it's Groundhog Day on Saturday.
All right.
Speaking of which...
Speaking of which, go ahead.
I hereby move that the members of the Town Council Committee at the Hall, along with Town Manager John Burt, Assistant Town Manager Bob Zagami, Planning Director John Reiner, Economic Development Manager Paige Brock, Tax Assessor Mary Gardner, Assistant Assessor Jennifer Sullivan, Finance Director Cindy Landry, and Attorney Jonathan Kaplan go into executive session to discuss attorney-client communications per Connecticut General Statutes one-dash-two-three-one...
B.
...B pertaining to Belle Fort Beatty.
Second. Moved by Heed, seconded by Parker. All those in favor of going into executive session as per Councilor Heed, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Okay, so we are in executive session at eight eighteen. Okay, we are back out of executive session, and we are on to item five-C, twenty-nineteen thirty-five EPA Brownfields Grant Assessment, Brownfields Assessment Grant on page twenty-five, and I don't know where we left off, someone help me out. Councilor Overy? No?
I have...
Or were we still here? I read Conrad did the last one. Julia?
Tell me what I'm reading.
Page twenty-seven, motion on Brownfields Assessment Grant, please.
Okay. Motion to recommend a resolution to endorse the Seminoval Grant Application to the EPA for the Brownfield Assessment of Two Proposed TIF Districts at Center Groton and at Thames Five, Thames Five Corners, and authorize the Town Manager John Burt to sign all required grant documents for such program. I so move.
Second. Moved by Overy, seconded by Sefery. Mr. Reiner?
Good evening, John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development. I'll make this quick, because I know it's late. We've been working with UConn, Class and Pressers...
I don't know what that is. Leanne? Oh, it is Leanne.
Over the course of the past semester, developing a US EPA Brownfields Grant, not a DECD Grant for three-hundred thousand dollars to look at doing Brownfields Assessments in two of our proposed TIF districts. There's no matching funds required, just staff time. We can apply, you know, this is a national-level grant, so there's going to be a lot of other people applying. I think our chances of getting it are moderate, but it's something that we thought was worthwhile pursuing.
Quick question, what is the relationship between the town and the city, because it is a city area within the town of Groton? Do we have to have them apply with us, or how does it work?
We can apply for this because the city is part of the town in doing Brownfields Assessment. So for example, we received a Brownfields Grant from DECD to help clean up Groton Heights, located within the city, it's a property we own, so this is an assessment. We'd be working with the city, the class, the students that helped develop the, the basic grant that we have did work with the city planner on this, so he's aware of this effort.
Anyone else have questions or comments? Mr. Burt?
I was just going to mention, I did, I did speak with Mayor Hetrick about it also, so he's familiar with it.
Is there an advisory board tied to this? Is this the one that I was reading that has an advisory board? I'm looking, I'm looking.
Well, we certainly work this through, there would be public outreach as part of this project, we'd be working it through our TIF Advisory Board. The draft of the grant that was, that we gave you still needs a fair amount of work.
That's why I'm wondering if I wrote my note on the... Okay, any other questions? Councilor Baumgartner?
More of a comment, it'd probably behoove the town to reach out to the offices of Senators Murphy and Blumenthal and Congressman Courtney to maybe write a letter in support of the grant application. I know in the past, that's done for similar grants, so might be helpful.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of twenty-nineteen thirty-five EPA Brownfields Assessment Grant, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. We have one minute to take the next one. So we are on to five-D, twenty-nineteen fifty-three Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Application, and we are scheduling a public hearing. Councilor Atwater?
Recommend a solution to schedule a public hearing for the March fifth, two thousand nineteen Town Council Meeting, so that this application can be approved by the town prior to the April twelfth, two thousand nineteen deadline. I so move.
Second. Moved by Atwater and seconded by Parker. Is there any question on this particular item? It's for ADA improvements, and it's a pass-through grant. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of twenty-nineteen fifty-three Small Cities Community Development Block Grant, twenty-nineteen application, setting public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. Okay, we are officially past ten o'clock. Thank you, Mr. Reiner. We're officially past ten o'clock, and we have three items remaining, so I need consensus to move forward. Councilor Baumgartner?
No, I was, if you needed a second on that motion, I...
No, we just, we just need consensus to move forward. No objection? Okay, so we are on to twenty-nineteen twenty-three Department of Education Youth Services Bureau Grant on page forty. Councilor Schmidt, please.
I recommend a resolution approving the Town Manager John M. Burt or his designate to authorize, is authorized to file an application with the State of Connecticut Department of Education for fiscal year ending two thousand twenty municipal youth services funding in an amount to be determined by the Department of Education, and to amend contractual agreements for such funding to ensure continuation of short-term counseling, crisis intervention and prevention, and support programs for Groton youth and families. I so move.
Moved by Schmidt and seconded by Overy. Mr. Burt, did you want to address anything on these?
All right, just to mention, this and the next one are recurring grants, so first one for personnel, the second one for, for items purchased, items to purchase type of thing. Marge Fundola's wanted to be here, she intended to be here, however, she's feeling under the weather and had to cancel, but like I said, they're routine, but if you have any questions, I can get them to her, and she can reply before the regular council meeting.
Councilor Heed?
Are these matching grants or just straight grants?
Straight grants.
Matching grants.
This one says matching grant on page forty? It's on the second... Matching funds are required.
What should be on our budget then?
Twenty-seven thousand, six ninety-nine.
Yeah, this is every year, correct? Right.
Right. We would have, we'd have it budgeted because it's recurrent. I don't know what, I'd have to ask Marge what the...
Councilor Sefery?
We are already paying the councilors as town employees.
Right.
So our matching funds are already...
They're already budgeted, yes.
So this is just, effectively, it does not affect our budget.
Correct, other than hurts us if we don't take it.
Right. Anything else? Seeing no further discussion, this is for twenty-nineteen twenty-three Department of Education Youth Services Bureau Grant. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so moved unanimously. We are on to twenty-nineteen twenty-two Department of Education Youth Services Bureau Enhancement Grant on page fifty-five. Councilor Sefery, please.
I recommend a resolution approving the Town Manager John M. Burt or his designate is authorized to apply for and contract with the State of Connecticut Department of Education for fiscal year ending twenty, Youth Services Bureau Enhancement Grant Program, funding in an amount to be determined by the Department of Education.
Second. Moved by Sefery and seconded by Schmidt. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of twenty-nineteen twenty-two Department of Education Youth Services Bureau Enhancement Grants, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. That leaves us with twenty-eighteen two sixty-one-one Town Council Appointment Policy. I'd like to go to Councilor Heed because I believe he has something he wanted to say about this item.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to refer this to our last council meeting in February, February twenty-six. There is one step that I still have to do. I need to reach out to the chairs of each of the committees and explain to them the changes and make sure that they're on board with it. So February twenty-six, I think?
I don't remember, I'm sorry.
Just, just a reminder that that's the meeting where we have an EDC year-end update, no Ink Gardens, the land sale Conservation Commission is giving their report there. Might end up being, but there's no ideal time, all our meetings have...
Honestly, I don't suspect that there's going to be any opposition. The, the question is just changing the process of how we reappoint current members of boards and commissions, as opposed to putting it in the, at the political party level, it would be the, changing it to the chair of each of the boards and commissions because they see these people every single month, and it would just be easier for them to do it, I think. So that's, I mean, a lot of spelling corrections and changing chair, chairman to chairperson, you know, welcome to the twenty-first century. So it's not really contentious stuff, it, it's just a vote, I think.
So are you making...
So it would give us a chance to review it again if we need to make any changes at our next Personnel Committee meeting, and that's all.
So...
Motion to, that's a motion to table.
Motion to postpone to February twenty-six.
Can you say it all, and then we'll get a second, please?
Sure. I would like to make a motion to postpone a vote on the Personnel, Town Council Personnel and Appointment Policy until February twenty-six, twenty nineteen. I so move.
Second. Moved by Heed, seconded by Baumgartner. Any discussion on the motion to postpone? Seeing none, all those in favor of postponing until the February twenty-sixth meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously, that item is postponed. Review of agenda items. What exactly is that? Anything left over? I, um, we're not, we're not at seven yet. Anything, are you on six? Do you have something for item six? That's why I'm trying to question, what is an agenda item? What do you, what does that exactly mean? I don't, review of agenda item. Anything that was on our agenda, I believe that we didn't get to, I think? Oh, okay. Is what I think that is referring to. Under item number seven, I make a motion to suspend the rules to consider, to recommend, how much do you need me to tell you now? I make a motion to suspend the rules to recommend a resolution for moving forward on Bill, House Bill fifty-seven sixty-five. Second. Just a minute. Moved by Granatowski, seconded by Baumgartner. So it is the, the bill that was just... it is the bill that was just passed, and we can't have discussion right now since there's a motion. But all those in favor of suspending the rules, I need two-thirds, so six of us would need to agree to this. All those in favor of suspending the rules to recommend a resolution for this, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Not everybody voted. We're going to say that's unanimous. All right, so the rules are suspended, so now I'm going to make a motion. I move that we recommend a resolution for the town of Grattan to move forward with the provisions of the bill that was just passed today and signed by the Governor, 5765, an act establishing the federal shutdown affected employees loan program and providing additional assistance to federal employees. I so move.
Second.
Okay. I need to write that. So I recommend a resolution for the town of Grattan to move forward with the provisions of, I don't know what the public act number is, we weren't sure yet. It's House Bill 5765 regarding assistance to employees affected by the federal shutdown. Okay.
That would be to allow them to postpone the payment of their taxes.
Yes, that's correct. And the manager has already spoken to the town attorney about the provisions that she recommends that we implement. This would only be our taxes, the town taxes. Each fire district would have to take care of their own. We cannot affect the fire districts at all. I don't know what else. What else do you need to know?
Those are all paid in July. Those are paid in July anyway.
Fire districts.
Right.
Is there any discussion about asking the manager to move ahead with the resolution? All those in favor of recommending a resolution for the town of Grattan to move forward with the provisions of House Bill 5765, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. So moved unanimously. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
No. We had to come out of this.
Okay.
Out of what?
No, no, we're just, we're just, we're still on other business.
Oh, we're still on other business? Yes.
We have other business.
I have other business.
Sorry. I draw my motion. I forgot. I apologize.
Okay. Other business?
I would like to follow the lead of New London and send a letter to Congressman Joe Courtney regarding our interest in becoming a sister city with the cities within Jamaica and Israel in relation to the Thames River port and the cybersecurity as presented to us by George Mathol. And with that being said, I would like to recommend a motion for a vote on Sister Cities on Tuesday, February 5.
Second.
Second.
Okay, you're going to have to write that up for me, okay?
Yep.
So Franco, seconded by Atwater, to recommend a resolution on Sister Cities.
Yes.
As presented by George Mathol.
Mathol.
Sister Cities.
I don't think that that's necessarily explained.
But she said it, so she said it.
I have it all written down.
Yeah, but it should be explained by.
And you want it when?
February 5.
That would be the council meeting, wouldn't it? It doesn't have to go to Cal.
Right. So either you'd have to suspend the mo, you could suspend the rules that day, or, you know, to actually, you know, you really wouldn't vote on anything. Now, if there's consensus, I would put it on the agenda. You'd suspend the rules in terms of going through Cal. Or else you could do what you just did on the last one, where you actually suspend rules to add it to the agenda tonight for discussion and make the recommendation for the February 5th regular board meeting. It can go either way. But by, if you do it now, does, you know, I don't know if you're prepared to really present anything at this point. So by just telling me to put it on the 5th, you'll suspend the rules that night, and it gives time to do some research or pull some information together for that meeting.
I'd prefer to have it go to a Cal and then go to a council meeting. That's my preference.
Then we won't, then it'll be March, right?
Right, but she needs to suspend the rules to add it to the agenda.
So we won't actually vote on it until March.
There we go, Cal, February.
Yes. I'd rather not push it out that far.
Is there any information we would have gotten in that informational hearing that we would be getting in the Cal?
I don't know. I don't know what's out there. I don't know what Mayor-
Can we discuss now? Am I open? Is this open for discussion?
Okay, we've got multiple things going here, so.
I thought we already had a sister city. I thought we had two already.
I think those fail, I don't think those went through from what I read. I don't think, I don't have anything in the records to show we ever actually completed the deal. I think we reached out in the past, but I don't think it was formalized.
Can-
I think we should call them brother cities, because it's less likely to-
Person cities.
... draw.
Are you, are you done? Okay, go ahead. Because this is basically just giving Joe Courtney a letter, asking him to see if the other cities are even interested. This isn't making any kind of agreements yet. We're not even to that place. We're just looking to see if they're actually interested. Is that, am I correct?
Correct.
So it's just simply, we're, we're sending a letter to Joe Courtney, is what we're doing now. Counselor Parker?
Okay. Can we look at, and see what the old letter said, and what cities we were going to do?
I haven't found anything in the sys, all I found is a brief reference to it, in that, you know, under the old agenda system. And there's no attachments for the, I don't know if they got to the point, there was some discussion of it, I don't know if they got to the point of submitting a letter. The letter's just a general letter of interest. Then the congressman has a form he has to send to the consulate for those, for those countries. And then they go take it from there on their part and get back to us.
I'm going to get more information, but, okay. Counselor Overy?
It may be just me, but my feeling is that when the presentation was made, it wasn't clear who it was really coming from. And I think that kind of muddied the waters. So I think that if we can move it along, it's good, but we probably, I want the process to be correct, so that if it comes to be, you know, we don't have a problem with the onset. But it does have to be addressed in a speedy manner, if there's a way.
Counselor Atwater?
I guess I would just say that if we discussed this back in October, we already had a less than speedy response.
We didn't discuss it, unfortunately. We only listened to a presentation.
He presented.
But I think it was understood at the end of his presentation that we would do something.
I did not understand that. That was not, that was not my intention at that time. I don't know, I can't speak for the rest of, the rest of you, but that was not my intention. Counselor Franco?
I rewatched that meeting, and he had requested a letter for Joe Courtney, and our response was, well, it wasn't my response, actually, Patrice's response was that she would, she thought we should talk to Scott Bates first. And that hasn't happened either.
I did talk to Scott Bates.
Oh, we haven't?
I talked to him. I know you haven't. I talked to him. And I have not had any sense of urgency to get this done. Did you talk to Scott Bates?
I did not speak to Scott Bates, but I know that Joe Courtney's been talked to, and he's on board, and he's basically, because New London and the city are, as far as I understand, are going forward and are interested, they're waiting on us. And Joe Courtney can't do anything until we respond to him. So my thought is, I personally think we need to vote on it, and we need to make a decision, and do it in a speedy manner now.
Counselor Parker?
I still would like more, I want more information from everyone, and I would like the opinion of Mr. Courtney, if possible.
You know, I was in the meeting with, when George presented to Congressman Courtney. I don't think he has a, I don't think he's going to give a real opinion. It's easy for him to submit the request. He's just a pastor. He's like, you know, wherever you want. Anyway, he, you know, I don't think there's an opinion to be gained there. It's an easy process from that, from his standpoint. He said, I'd be happy to just pass it on. That's really what he's doing. It's just kind of a pass-through.
Counselor Heed?
Our council meetings generally go relatively fast. It's business that we've already talked about in Cows. So I personally would have no problem having a suspension of the rules, being that we've already had the presentation. If more information comes before us on that day, there's suspension of the rules, and we vote on it, just, I'm just letting you know where I am. I think it's okay.
Counselor Atwater?
Can you say, this would then take place on February 5?
Correct.
Whatever, okay. I guess the other question I have is if it's, if it's a letter to Representative Courtney, that he then passes through to ask these other cities, and they came back and say yes, don't we then still have to decide whether we accept that or not?
There's a whole process if they're actually interested. It's a long, you have to negotiate an agreement.
So I don't see what the issue is for holding up for more information now, because more information now isn't going to tell us anything if it doesn't go forward later on.
I feel like some people are not convinced that this is something that they want to do, is what I think. And I think they need more convincing, is the sense that I'm getting. I don't, I could be wrong, but that's the feeling that I'm getting, that people aren't convinced that this is something that they wish to do at this time.
So I would think then that we vote on it for February 5 and find out, rather than having it just sort of hang out there for forever and ever. So I would agree with Conrad that we, that we, we go ahead.
Any other discussion? So the motion on the floor is, I don't have it, you said you had it all written down?
Yes.
I need like something that I can turn into the manager to give to Ms. Hilton, and so, can you read it again, please?
Yes, I'd, I'd like to make a motion, I recommend a motion for a vote on Sister Cities on Tuesday, February 5. What is that? I mean, I could go through the whole beginning part of it.
So because this was not on the agenda, in order to, don't we have to suspend rules? Like I just had to suspend rules to get something on?
He just directs me generally to put it on the agenda. I'll put it on the agenda, and then you'll suspend the rules that night.
That night.
Right.
Right, thanks. This is just other business.
So, okay. So, all those in favor of, say it again, putting this on the agenda for February 5, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. So seven in favor, or any abstentions? Seven in favor.
No, six.
No, six in favor.
Six, three, zero.
I only heard Rita and I.
And Julia.
Julia, okay. Six, three, zero. Schmidt, Granatowski, Parker are opposed. Okay, so then that will have to have the rules suspended on February 2 in order for that to appear.
Fifth, right.
February 5.
Right.
Second Saturday. Okay, hold up, please. Do you have something else?
I was just going to mention, I know George had provided me copies of agreements.
Excuse me?
George had provided me copies of other agreements for Sister Cities, so I thought I'd, I'll send those to you, just so you can kind of see where that could potentially be going if it went through. It might at least give you some idea of whether it's a place you want to be. So I will forward those to you.
Okay, great.
Counselor Overy?
But our communications from this point on would be with Courtney, Representative Courtney and the town.
Well, eventually, well, eventually he'll just direct me to issue a letter, or draft a letter, and then send it to him, and then he'll, he'll submit to, so really, there's not any-
Him being who?
Courtney. Right. The letter will go to Courtney to say, yes, you are interested. He wants to get a letter from, or a resolution or whatever. It doesn't have to be, it could be a resolution, but from the city of, and I don't think the city of Grattan has done anything with it yet, but London did, New London did.
Okay. I just wanted to get the-
Right, the flow.
The people involved.
But the negotiations for the, would be between Courtney, and they said it would be in secret between Courtney and the Sister Cities for like cybersecurity and other things that are-
Right.
-of serious interest, and we wouldn't be involved in that.
Well, the Sister City agreement we'd have to be involved in, that we're a party to that.
Right. But the cybersecurity issues and other things would not be-
Right. One of the goals is cybersecurity.
And I think the governor just came out and stated that he wants to put a cybersecurity hub somewhere in the state of Connecticut. And my thought is, why not here?
Any further discussion? Counselor Heed?
Motion to adjourn?
Second. Adjourned by Heed, seconded by Parker. All those in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? We are adjourned at 10:24.